Our amendments to our agenda, Chris, staff, any changes to the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
A motion second to approve our agenda is presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed, it's carried. Move on to consent agenda, one item to approve or amend the ditch authority meeting minutes of May twentieth, twenty twenty five.
I'll make a motion to approve the twentieth meeting minutes.
My second.
Okay, a motion a second to approve those minutes. Is there any further discussion in regards to those minutes? Any further discussion? Hearing on all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed, they're carried. Okay, we'll move on to our first item of the evening, continuation of public hearing on the acceptance of repair of CD nine and the assessment of the final costs. Chris?
Good evening. So we're here for a public hearing. Public hearing was first scheduled for February fourth, and then we continued this hearing to March fourth due to ineffective notice of interested parties. Then the March fourth hearing, we heard some public testimony and was continued to today to allow staff to gather information and have some property owner discussions. Just to recap where we are, the the contract, contract price, the amount paid on certificates, the unpaid balance, and the work is completed under the contract. Estimated cost of repair, the construction cost, is six hundred and forty thousand, seven hundred and ninety-three dollars. And the, or the estimated cost was six hundred and forty-three thousand, seven ninety-three dollars. The actual cost of the construction of the repair was three hundred and thirty-two thousand, one hundred and twenty dollars and zero cents. But additional outstanding cost for the repair proceedings, the redetermination of benefits and damages, and reestablishment of records brings the total amount to be assessed to four hundred and ninety-seven thousand, four hundred and twenty-one dollars and sixty-three cents for County Ditch Nine. Just to recap, the total benefits determined for County Ditch Nine are one million, three hundred and sixty-four thousand, five hundred and fifty-one dollars and one cent. At the last hearing, we we had a presentation of the repair. Is that of any interest to go through that again, or?
I think we should.
Okay. Well, then I'm gonna jump ahead back to the slides that we had last time, and then I guess we'll go ahead and I'll give it over to Joe Lewis and just kind of recap those slides that we saw at the the last hearing, recapping the actual physical work that occurred on the channel of ditch nine at this this time, so.
Thank you, Commissioners. Let me just, oh, you did jump to that slide, okay. So we are going to, I'll just recap the presentation, the information that was provided earlier on March fourth, and and try to, you know, hit the high points here. So first off, CD nine, well, we'll recap the schedule, summarize the repair report, overview of construction activity, summarize project costs, and then review that final payment recommendation to Hellman Construction. So CD nine is within Maywood and Glendarrado Townships. It has five point six miles total length, and it drains eleven point three square miles, and its outlet there in the lower left of that image is into the Saint Francis River. So CD nine actually receives water from two other public drainage systems, CD twelve and CD fourteen. At the top of the screen, the bluish shading is CD fourteen, and then the pink on the left-hand side in the center is CD twelve. So CD fourteen comes in at the very top of CD nine, and CD twelve comes in towards the middle of the of the system. So to recap the schedule here, we have the repair petition was submitted in mid two thousand and twenty, and then the board ordered the redetermination of benefits beginning in late two thousand and twenty, and that concluded in mid two thousand and twenty-two. The yellow star image there was when the the notices were out that went out to the landowners on the system notifying them of that public hearing that occurred there in mid two thousand and twenty-two. And then we followed with an engineer's report that discussed the reestablishment of records following a ditch law proceeding to really define the extent and the depth and the shape and the size of the ditch. And again, a notice was sent out to the landowners, excuse me, to landowners at that time. After adoption of the records, we engineers, we developed a repair report that assessed the condition of the system, came forward with alternatives on repairs that could occur to the system along with cost estimates. And then in mid two thousand and twenty-three, again, a notice was sent out to to landlords regarding the potential repairs and what was gonna be discussed at the the hearing. And then following the order to approve a repair project, construction bids were advertised and were received in late two thousand and twenty-three, and the project project was awarded to Hellman Construction in, I think, August of two thousand and twenty-three. Work began in November and went into early January of two thousand and twenty-four. And then there was a pause in two thousand and twenty-four where they they let the spoils dry out into the spring. It was a wet spring last year. They did some of that leveling of spoil and seeding of those spoil banks into mid two thousand and twenty-four, and then there was some additional work authorized that went through some additional areas where wetlands were a concern, and some work was omitted from the original project, but some of that work occurred late in two thousand and twenty-four to go back in and excavate some additional lengths of the CD fourteen channel, mostly on the upstream end of CD fourteen, upstream of Highway twenty-three. Following the completion of that work, we prepared a acceptance report as required by Minnesota statute documenting that the work was completed by the contractor to the specifications of the project and recommended a final payment. So that was, you know, kind of start to finish, the high-level overview of it, and I have additional slides that I'll touch on a few other things. This is, this is basically the same schedule in a bulleted format versus that graphic. This talks about the process on that record reestablishment proceeding and really why it's it's done. And with nine and fourteen, the real reason for driving that need was the the wetlands that are adjacent or on the system. We we are scrutinized by by the Wetland Conservation Act, LGU, and the the TEP or the the other members that that help the LGU oversee that regulation. So they they look at, well, how much material are you taking out of the ditch? Is that the original depth? Because if you deepen it beyond that original depth, you know, you potentially have impacts to those wetlands, and and that cost to mitigate wetland impacts as required by that Wetland Conservation Act can become large. A little bit about how that process is done, you know, we surveyed the entire length of both nine and fourteen for that record reestablishment proceeding. Approximately every thousand feet, we were probing down into the channel bottom to look for that original bottom of the ditch. So we typically see, you know, some organic mucky material or or black material, some topsoil that is deposited above the originally constructed channel bottom. So we look at those points all along the, you know, five, six miles of ditch here on fourteen, and look at the design profile from the data we did have back in nineteen oh, nineteen ten or thereabouts, and come up with a recommendation for what that original depth and profile of the ditch is along its length. Switching to the reditrib- redetermination of benefit proceedings that occurred before the record reestablishment, you know, so that's done by a independent, unbiased group of of viewers. Again, they're following a a statutory proceeding to determine, you know, how the different lands that drain into a public drainage system receive benefit, and those benefits are tabulated, and each landowner's proportion of benefit that they receive is then translated to their responsibility for cost on the system to operate and maintain. So this is a sample viewer's report, an excerpt that this was included in the mailing for the public hearing notice that went out in the twenty twenty-one, if I have my years right on that schedule. So, you know, the the graphic, the map shows how the different pieces of a property are benefited at different rates. So the colors signify, you know, how much how much they're benefited per acre according to the viewers. Then it's tabulated at a at a parcel level with inside of the report. And now, this is a couple of slides about the repair report. So our repair report consisted of, you know, our assessment of the condition of the system and how that impacted the capacity or efficiency of the drainage system. Yeah, so we looked at things like the amount of sediment in the channel. If you have sediment deposited in the channel, that's gonna impair the efficiency. Water levels are gonna be higher and more and remain elevated for longer periods of time if your ditch is less efficient than originally designed. We also looked at the culverts on the system. Are they the right depth or the right elevation compared to that design profile that was established in the as-construted report in the record reestablishment? Also looking at their capacity. Are they sized according to, you know, our our normal standard criteria? Do they move the two-year, five-year, ten-year, twenty-five-year event quickly enough or without without causing elevated water levels upstream of those crossings? So the project, the alternatives that are evaluated in the repair report, you know, list out listed out a a more aggressive repair that did not consider the cost of wetland impacts, and then a second alternative that scaled back some of the work to avoid wetland impacts and therefore minimizing the mitigation costs for those wetland impacts. A few sample photos of the conditions out there prior to the repair project. So on the left, you see a channel. Can't really see the channel, it's covered with snow, so not not the best conditions out there to get a great visual. But you see that, you know, there's there's brush, there's trees growing within or alongside the channel. On the right-hand side, you know, we see a a blockage, we see some tree debris right there in the middle and obstructing flow to some degree, and also causing your water to bounce out on the opposite side of the ditch and kind of eat away at that bank a little bit. So another sample image, there you see some sediment that has accumulated on the side of the channel enough that, you know, grass has taken a hold there. And when we look at the the condition, we're looking at, you know, not just what the bottom depth, bottom depth of the channel is, but you know, does it have its full width that it was originally intended to have? So in this case, we see that, well, a portion of the width of the channel is is being obstructed and impairing the efficiency of the of the system. So now, these are a few photos of the repair in action. Actually, these are more really the pre-pre-channel excavation. So on the left, you see some trees coming down. They haven't cleaned out the channel yet. On the right, you see a culvert that was not replaced, but the channel has been cleaned out just on the side of it. Then on the right-hand side, we see an old crossing that would be on one of the smaller branches off of the main chunk, just given the size of it. But there you see that's in pretty poor shape with the tree, trees and logs on top of it. This slide just shows the wetland areas that we looked at, and Chris, these are the, these are the CD nine. Are we doing CD nine or fourteen right now?
Nine.
Nine, okay, so I am on the right sec- section of slides. So this is on the upstream end of the main chunk. The red area signify the wetlands, the wetland types that we needed to really closely evaluate to comply with that Wetland Conservation Act, and there's just shows that you're what we were dealing with. The yellow, the yellow wetlands there, those ones were exempt from impacts from a repair of a drainage system. So on CD nine here, we actually did purchase point one acres of credit to lower a culvert just immediately downstream of this bit larger blob there in the top part of the image. So within our repair report, we tabulated, we estimated the project to cost four hundred and forty thousand for the construction cost estimate, and accounting for contingency and other costs, a total of six hundred and thirty-six thousand. Once we opened bids, we did have some some good bids, a number of them below the engineer's estimate, some above. But the low bidder at two hundred and ninety-seven thousand was Hellman Construction. And now we switch over to some images of of the construction. So here, they're taking down trees. I think they they did on the order of eight, nine, or ten acres of tree clearing during the CD nine project. So more trees on the left, a channel on the right before they began work. There's some clearing that would occurred farther out in the distance there before the excavation to reshape that channel took place. So here's some after-channel excavation photos. There you see that that the ditch is here more noticeable. You see the spoils placed on the side of it before they've been leveled and seeded. And here is a a photo of a crossing being replaced, and this one was actually just downstream of that wetland image that we just showed. And another image of the channel being repaired on the right. And this was a photo taken probably in mid two thousand and twenty-four after work had been completed and after the spoils had been leveled and vegetation was was growing on those spoils. So the CD nine cost summary in total, accounting for publication notices, the redetermination of benefits proceedings of the viewing viewers, the damages to acquire the buffer strips. So again, a one oh three E ditch law requirement to compensate landowners that have that sixteen-and-a-half-foot buffer strip on their property next to the ditch. Engineering costs, the wetland credits, and then construction, so the total of four hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars there, so a hundred and thirty-six thousand below the estimate that was in the repair report. So within our acceptance report to the board, we have recommended final payment to Hellman Construction for their, in the amount of sixteen thousand, six hundred and six dollars.
Okay. Chris, do you have anything else you want to add?
Ah, no, none of these things.
Okay. All right. Any other comments from staff? Michelle, Christine, anything on CD nine? All right. So we'll reopen the public hearing. If there's any public comments, landowners, if you'd please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record, appreciate that.
Give me just a moment to unmute anyone that was online. I had to had to mute folks, so. In case they wanted to talk.
And maybe for those of you that are in the room, if I could go to the people online first, I'd appreciate that, then we can take care of them and make sure they get an opportunity. Is there anyone online or on the phone that would like to speak in regards to this item on CD nine?
They would need to, I'm sorry, they would need to.
And you'll need to unmute yourself, please.
They would need to unmute themselves, right?
I can see a couple callers on here on your phones. If there's anything you'd like to add into the public comment. Again, for those of you that are online on your phones, looks like there's two people calling in. If there's anyone that would like to speak, now is your opportunity to do that. You will need to unmute yourselves, though. And again, one more call for those online that would like to speak. You will need to unmute yourselves. All right, let's move into the room then. If there's anyone that would like to speak, if you could please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record.
Okay, I'll get out of the way.
Anyone at all?
This is just for ditch nine, Chris.
This is, yep, I just want to deal with ditch nine for now, please. I know that they're very similar, but we need to do them separately. So this is for county drainage ditch number nine. Again, anybody on CD nine that would like to speak? I want to give you plenty of opportunities, so. Again, anybody online, I see there's still two callers. If you'd like to speak in regards to county drainage ditch number nine? Jim?
My name is Jim Markfort. Do you want the address too, or what?
That's fine. Got it.
Now, this meeting, you're gonna finalize, but have you, you haven't determined are you going to, what the interest rate is, what we're gonna be able to do? I mean,
Right.
I don't know what we have to speak on yet because we don't have too much more information yet, except what you showed us here.
That's fair. So that's something we can certainly have some discussion about, if that's something I think public's interested in. I don't know if if there are any other items besides that specific that you'd like to know, because we'll move into some of that discussion. But is there anything else?
No, just wondering if you're just gonna vote to finish it, we don't have no say on nothing else.
In the repayment period, okay.
More information on what you got going tonight, or?
Sure, okay.
Okay, yeah.
Let's do that.
We find out more.
Sure. Anyone else with specific questions on CD nine?
Scott Demars. We have an engineering fees on the deals that he just went through, three different payments, forty-one thousand, thirty-three thousand, I don't remember the other one. Who got those payments? We have a county engineer here. Why are we paying somebody else?
Um, can can we put the the breakdown back up there again? I need to see it, so I'm talking about the right thing.
I gotta switch that screen around.
Joe, is that something you want to address, or Chris, or I can reach at it?
I I can give a summary of what each item is.
Okay.
So the record reestablishment, that essentially included the survey of the five to six miles of ditch, collecting the borings, summarizing that that information into a report, along with assessing that data to make the recommendations that we did within the report. And then you're responding to comments from agencies, DNR and and the WACA-LGU attending a hearing, and I think continued hearing. That's probably a pretty good summary of of that task.
Would would you say it's fairly typical for ditch authorities throughout the state to be hiring outside engineering firms to do this?
For the most part, yes. When it comes to, I mean, some some do in-house, kind of more routine isolated repairs, but but when it comes to like a system-wide project, we're typically see a outside engineer brought in.
Okay, Chris?
We're paying an engineer already. Why are we hiring other people to come in and charge us more when we're paying somebody whatever their salary is?
Yeah, he's talking about me, so I'll address that. It really, it comes down to staff capacity. We have a limited capacity of engineering, and unfortunately, or fortunately, however you want to look at it, our engineering staff is consumed with just delivering our five-year road improvement program, so. When full staffed, we have three engineering technicians that do the surveying. I have an assistant engineer that reviews construction plans during the design phase, and then I review all the construction plans and provide final approval. It really comes down to a capacity. When we receive these repair petitions, our engineering staff is already consumed with the design inspection and surveying of our road construction projects. So it really kind of forced our hand to look to outside help so we can complete these these tasks and respond to the repair petitions.
Can you tell me, Chris, and or Michelle, if it was done, if it was done in-house, would we not be putting those costs towards the ditch system?
Correct. Those, when we do work on the ditch, when I do spend time on those ditches, that time comes out of the ditch fund. Our other sources of funding are strictly for when I work on the roads. Due to the nature of those funding sources, we can't.
That was coming out of a ditch fund, you said, if you did it.
Correct.
But now it's coming out of our pocket, being you own source.
The ditch fund is funded by the assessments on the landowners. So the, and and we didn't get into it today, but we've talked in the past how, before starting this project, the ditch fund was zero. The county general fund has loaned the ditch fund the money to complete the work to date. And that's a big part of this topic of discussion today is what are the terms, you know, the interest rate and the payback period to pay back the county general fund for this work?
Thank you. Members, maybe it's appropriate time to talk about that now, and what you're what you're thinking of, but did you have a different question, Commissioner Heinen?
Yeah, Mr. Chair. So, Chris, you can only do certain parts of this anyway. We'd have to hire out the record reestablishment and all that anyway, too, correct?
Well, yeah, because record reestablishment required staff with. staff with to go out there and survey it, you know, find that ditch bottom like he showed the picture. You know, somebody in that channel with hip waders on augering down to find where the silt stops and the clay started. Then bring that back to an office, plot that in a CAD program. It did include meetings with regulatory agencies to get them to concur that, yeah, that's where the bottom of the ditch should be. Drafting up reports, a lot of what Joe and his predecessor did was the time it takes to draft up reports to send to those regulatory agencies just to have them say, yeah, okay, we agree with that. Those kind of things, so. Yeah, if it relied on me and my staff, we we, yeah, we wouldn't be this far in the process. We wouldn't have cleaned out any ditches yet, probably.
Okay, thank you. Members, any discussion you'd like to have on interest and payback periods? I know I have a couple thoughts, but.
Yeah, I think we've discussed that, how we've done it before. It was like two percent below what we can get for money in the county.
Okay.
And I think that's a fair. I mean, we're not, we're not out to make any money on this. We're just, it's a service that we offer.
And that's usually what we've done with the other ditches too, though, just not this.
So in this particular case, we're looking at roughly two percent. How about the payback period? Fifteen years?
Up to fifteen years, it's fine with me. It's really up to the landowners, too.
And I, and I think this would be maybe a good time, Christine, if you're willing to explain how that process will work once we've established the interest rate and the payback period, specifically how that would work for landowners and what their options are.
And Mr. Chair, one question that either Michelle or Christine maybe can answer is what does state statute allow us? How much time does the state statute allow us for payback?
Up to fifteen years.
Okay.
Okay, so no payments can be made until the final order is accepted. So we can't take prepayments yet if anybody wanted to pay. Once the resolution and the final order is accepted, there will be a forty-five day of interest-free period. After that, interest will be calculated from day forty-six through December thirty-first of this year, and it will be prorated on a monthly basis. So if someone were to come in October and pay, they would only pay up until that point of October's interest, what would have accumulated. After January first of two thousand twenty-six, all interest must be paid for an entire year. So if someone were to come in and want to pay off their assessment, say, February of twenty-six, they're going to pay all of twenty-six's interest. So.
And these are handled like property tax statements, up from May and November payments?
Yeah, it'll be listed on your property tax statement as the ditch assessment. And then half will be due in May and half in October, November.
Okay. All right. And that statute?
Yep.
Okay. All right. Hopefully that answered. I think maybe the members of the public kind of heard what we're thinking about here for interest and payback periods. Jim, if that answered your question, that's what we're looking at doing, probably a two percent interest and a fifteen-year payback. Okay. Sorry, so the discussion was, I think the members are considering a two percent interest rate and a fifteen-year payback. And again, I'm on CD nine now, please remember that. So, Tim, go ahead. Yeah, please.
Tim Cole. My question is, this last meeting we had, it was postponed for a lot of reasons. One of the reasons it was postponed was we were going to look into the statutes to find out if there's any legit reasons that we can push it past that fifteen years for the statute of where it was and how it was how the project was completed.
And I think, I think the discussion was originally it was going to be ten, and I think we did look into it and were able to go to fifteen.
Okay, so then it is.
Yep, and there is a, and if you're interested, I think Michelle gave me a statute here in regards to that. Minnesota statutes one oh three E dot seven three one talks about that.
Okay.
Would allow us up to fifteen.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
There's some extra copies of state statutes.
Okay, great. Anyone else? Again, CD nine.
Gary Grundle, I'm assuming that all work is completed on the ditch?
There are some punch list items on the ditch, to my knowledge, that need to be done yet. I think one is a swale actually on your property.
Yeah.
Was there? That's on fourteen. I'm trying to keep them separate here. I don't think there was any other ones.
That would be the only one on nine.
Yep, I think that's the only one, but that one, that won't change the the cost. So even if we've got to punch list that out yet, we're trying to finalize the cost.
You would finish the work.
Yes, absolutely. That's on our punch list.
And is it possible to get a list of everybody who got paid on easements?
I'm sure it is. Public record, yeah. Buffer strips?
Buffer strips.
The buffer strips?
Yep. If you, and
I'd like to have a list of everyone who got paid and how much they were paid.
And I would assume any landowner who's the ditch property or ditch actually runs through their property would have received a buffer strip damage. Okay. But if they don't have it, they could request it or see it. We could get, we can get that to you. Is that through Chris's office maybe, or what's best? Christine? So Gary, through Christine's office. Christine can help you with that information. Anyone else on CD nine? One last time for those that are online, I think there was two phone calls. Anyone online? All right.
Frank Danielson, fifteen nine oh one sixty-fifth Street Northeast. I know it's too late to discuss costs. We're probably way beyond that. Ditch nine repair and our outlet benefits for ditch twelve. We're going to end up paying fifteen thousand nine hundred and twenty-six dollars and forty-five cents. And we have basically basically for ditch nine, it's just outlet benefits. We do have land on ditch fourteen that is on the western edge of the watershed. And that's debatable that it will even benefit from ditch fourteen. But since we have no land that abuts it or even close to it, basically, our assessment is totally for outlet benefits for ditch twelve. That's my only comment.
Okay, thank you, Frank. Anyone else, CD nine? Anyone else on CD nine? Final call, final call on CD nine. Okay.
Nick Schumacher, just a question. I mean, talking to a lot of people, obviously, it's been going on for a while. These wetland credits that we were had to buy because of mistake from a county worker, from what I've understood. Don't the county have insurance for something like that? I mean, obviously, we got rid of that person because of what happened. A lot of these credits shouldn't have had have been bought to begin with because we didn't make the ditch wider, we didn't make it deeper. All we were doing is cleaning it, and the plugs that we left were later determined that basically messed everybody up upstream of these plugs. So it didn't help them at all. So they had to get rid of these plugs, otherwise you did nothing, basically.
So I think the short answer is, and anybody, please correct me if I'm wrong. Wetland Conservation Act says any private or public ditch that hasn't been cleaned in the last twenty-five years is subjected to the Wetland Conservation Act. And so therefore, as they mentioned, ditch authority had to deal with a technical evaluation panel, which is made up of I think, five different authorities, Bowser, DNR, Soil and Water Conservation District, US Army Corps, and I'm missing one. RLGU. So made up of five people who make those determinations on whether or not there's wetlands impacted according to the Wetland Conservation Act. So when there were impacts to wetlands, we had to determine if we were going to repair through those, and if we were, we had to mitigate that.
But they, but talking to other people, like, they didn't go to bat for us at the county like they should have.
I would say, yeah.
Exactly.
The TEP, I would say, and I, and I will say, I would say, because the TEP is made up of these five different agencies, which are, by the way, unelected bureaucrats.
Exactly. So they just don't say, really.
But statute allows it. So that's, that's what we had to follow. And so and because it's a general question for CD fourteen, the repair report originally, and I don't know the exact numbers, but one of the options was three point one million dollars to do CD fourteen, which would have mitigated all the wetland impacts. The alternate was about eight hundred thousand, which we chose to do because we didn't want to mitigate all the wetlands on that system.
Right, and there's
Which we would have had to if we did that.
And there's no statute because it's not technically us as a residents' fault that the county or whoever is supposed to be doing this didn't do their job. So why are we getting penalized?
Ditch law, I guess, speaks to that. Did, Chris, go ahead.
I just want to make a comment. If if you recall, the hearings that we were having for CD nine, we had some outspoken individuals that were opposed to that project because they had the opposite opinion, that county was correct and that there was wetlands being impacted. And we, we had to go to bat, and that was a different, that was a different LGU at that time, I believe. It was the, the one that Mr. Schumacher referred to. That predecessor determined, yeah, there are wetland impacts, and we had to mitigate on nine. And what was it? Was it point six acres that we had to buy credits for?
Point six.
Point oh six.
Okay.
So I think it's, yeah, that's why we have a TEP panel, why there is an LGU. Today, people think that that we did not impact wetlands. At the time before we actually ordered the report, there was, there was members of the public that were staunchly opposed to cleaning out the ditch and believed that we were impacting wetlands. And just came down to, so we mitigated for point oh six, meaning that we impacted point oh three acres because it was a two to one replacement ratio.
And in our bank service area, it's about a hundred thousand dollar replacement cost.
That's right, what, yeah. So we, yeah.
And just to be clear, so we know what an LGU is, the local government unit, that's the county employee who's initiating the Wetland Conservation Act rules. It's not the county's rules, it's the state's Wetland Conservation Act. Yes, they're a county employee, but they're putting forth the Wetland Conservation Act, not the county's rules, if you will.
No, it's employed by the county.
But they are employed by the county, yes. And they are one of the members on this technical evaluation panel, one of the members.
One of the five.
Right.
And the TEP basically dictates what we can and can't do in the wetland areas.
Who's that, is that the panel?
That's the panel, the technical evaluation panel, made up of those five different entities, of which one member is a county member. The other members are DNR, Board of Water and Soil Resources, US Army Corps of Engineers, and the Soil and Water Conservation District. They all have a member sitting on that panel.
And they all, is there any of them that are voted in by the people?
No.
No.
How do they have jurisdiction then?
Through statute.
Again, same question as last time. How do we change this BS?
Same answers last time.
It's got to.
We got to get it changed, if that's the intent. But that's what statute says today.
Because basically, they're, they're not for the people at that point. They're for who's filling their pocket, which is
That could be.
And they're robbing it right from us. It's got to stop.
I'm just sharing with you what we're subjected to, is all I really can say. I, and realistically, in my opinion, this ditch authority has two powers, if you will. And that's to establish the interest rate and the repayment period. Most everything else is dictated to us by unelected officials. So take that for what it's worth.
On the maintenance fund, we dug into anything on that, like, are they going to come out and reevaluate in a?
So that's on our agenda for tonight, after we do CD fourteen, let's have that conversation then, if that's
Okay, yep.
Thank you. Anybody else on CD nine? Final call on CD nine.
Okay, I got a question on this ditch fund. You said it was at zero when you started. Where does the money come from to go into the ditch fund?
From the landowners.
From the landowners.
So the county general fund paid for this already.
Yep.
Okay, and now it's going to be assessed to the benefiting landowners to replace that money.
So then that, so we play, we replace it, ditch fund's going to be back at zero.
For the repair, yes.
So then after that, if you're going to have a ditch, a line, item line ditch fund in your general budget, where does that money come from?
From the landowners again, on any future maintenance assessments.
Only the landowners?
On the benefiting landowners.
Benefited landowners on ditch nine will be ditch nine's fund, though.
It'll be all separate.
It'll be separate from ditch twelve or fourteen.
Every ditch system would have their own maintenance dollars.
Yep.
And who's going to determine what that number's going to be?
Ditch authority.
Ditch authority, or hopefully we got input from the public.
And that's an item again, and I don't want to, I don't want to shut you off, Jim, but if we're going to talk about maintenance, we've got that item coming up on the agenda.
Yeah, but, well. How come it was at zero?
You're asking the wrong people about that.
Well, there were no maintenance funds before. Right.
Yeah, there isn't, hasn't been.
Ten years ago, there was one ditch that had a maintenance fund, I believe that was county ditch seven.
Seven, right, yeah.
So that was the only ditch that had it when the when I came to
Which would stand to reason because the majority of these ditches haven't been touched.
Yeah.
Well, it was very, very poor planning on everybody's part. I'm not just throwing it on you guys, on everybody's part over the years. Everybody knew it had to be done. And now a few of us landowners are getting assessed for a hundred years of stuff.
Correct.
And most of us can't afford that kind of assessment. I, you know, we appreciate that you you went out longer than you talked before, at least I do. I can't talk for the rest because we haven't discussed. These, these assessments are outrageous. And we talked to other counties, and no other counties have these kind of assessments when they clean the ditch. Morrison County, most, the most, the highest assessment I heard of up there was three thousand dollars. We have assessments up here pushing a hundred thousand dollars.
And I, Jim, I can't speak to what Morrison's doing or the other counties. I really don't know.
Well, I understand that, but these, these numbers are outrageous. And I guess I'll leave it at that. I got more to say, but I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, Jim. Anybody else on CD nine again, final call, please?
You know, Mr. Chair, between CD nine and C fourteen, we actually did look into grants and everything to help cover for some of this stuff, and we could not find any grants available to go after.
I know we spoke with Board of Water and Soil Resources, DNR, talked to Isaac Schultz to see if there's some state dollars available. Public health was involved.
We had public health involved too, looking for grants because they're our crime writers for the county.
Soil and Water Conservation District. I, I think it's no surprise what kind of condition the state of Minnesota's in, so it doesn't surprise me that they don't have a bunch of grant dollars sitting around to hand out to landowners. Regardless, we did check into that. Anyone else, CD nine? Before I close the public comment, anyone else, final call? All right, public comment periods closed. Members, what are your wishes? You have three different options in front of you. If you could take a look at those, and, or excuse me, two options, I guess. Take a look at those and see what it is you'd like to do.
So, Mr. Chair, so tonight, we're really looking at probably option number two with the the, the assessment and the
Two B.
Excuse me?
Two B? Is that what you're thinking?
Yes, two B. Yep, with the assess, the assessment and the payback period and the financial
The interest rate?
Interest rate charge.
So if that's what you'd like to do? We'll need a motion in a second to move ahead on it.
I'll move that motion, that we accept the contractors and their approved assessment. That we, do we need all the figures in there, I suppose, right?
Yep.
That'd be, we never really had a discussion on the interest, so at this point in time
We had some consensus, but
Consensus at two before I make one. That'll be at two percent and up to fifteen years on the payback.
Mr. Chair, is that enough, Michelle?
Yeah, I think what I do is motion to continue.
Yep.
To then
Right here.
According to what you stated.
So, Commissioner Bott, maybe?
Motion to, yeah.
And then B.
Item two, motion to continue the hearing to allow staff.
To draft the.
To draft and order the written to be accepted on the contractors and approve the assessment of two percent and up to fifteen years.
And then when would you continue it to?
Okay. How much time does staff need to put that information together? Next regular county board meeting, June seventeenth?
To June seventeenth, then.
June seventeenth at ten o'clock?
Ten A M.
Yeah.
Scott, I was just curious, what were the two A and B choices?
Well, the one. Yep.
All three were supposed to be written into the agreement.
Like, for instance, if we didn't act on the interest and payback tonight, we would just order staff to put together comments, but we know that a lot of the public's here for that action, so we're gonna, we're moving to set the interest rate and the payback period and approve the final contract amount.
Next time we'll do A, B, and C together.
And the, and the. So they're gonna have to, the reason we set the June seventeenth meeting is they're gonna have to take all the information that was gathered tonight and put that into the final, um, hearing. Okay?
Thank you.
All right. You made the motion?
Oh, sorry.
And the second, any other discussion? Any other discussion at all on CD nine? Hearing on roll call, please, Beth.
Commissioner Benoit?
Yes.
Commissioner Heinen?
Aye.
Commissioner Pop?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye. All right, anything else on CD nine? Move right into fourteen. Um, I think, for the sake of time and the people that were here, I don't know that we have to go through the everything again. It's basically the same slides for CD fourteen. Um, is there any other staff report or staff comments on fourteen before we move into the public comment?
Um, yeah, there were some specific engineering type items that were brought up at the last hearing regarding, uh, CD fourteen. So we were prepared as engineers to address those, if you'd like to, to hear those now.
Please, yep.
So, uh, maybe I will go back to the, uh, in the show, the, the first slide here. And, um, you okay just jumping right into those? So, so these, like I said, these are things that were brought up that, from my opinion, engineering items that the last hearing that we, we've addressed.
And these are bullet items from the public's concerns on fourteen?
On fourteen, correct.
Okay. Go ahead, Joe.
Okay, thank you. There are three locations. I got this overview map on the front end here, just to walk you through where these are at. So those are identified by those yellow stars. So we're gonna look at branch seven. There's questions on that. And then the crossing on the main trunk at a hundred and seventy-fifth avenue. So those are two at the north end. And then there was a question on branch three there, towards the center of the screen. So I'm gonna start with branch seven. That was not included in the repair project. Uh, it's roughly a quarter mile, I think, in, in total length. So the reason for not including it, again, came, comes back to the wetland, um, rules and the potential cost that we would have incurred, that the system would have incurred if that was repaired. So there was just some questions from landowners about, why wasn't that, why wasn't that cleared? And, you know, now I'm, I'm limited in the benefits that I'm receiving. So we just, you looked at the terrain that's out there, the surface drainage, uh, flow patterns, directions, what have you, and how, how is that land connected to branch seven? So this, the shading here in this image, I have that, like a legend in the lower left there, so the high ground is gray, gray, grayish, transitions the brown and red as you move lower elevations down to yellow, green, and then the lowest is like a blue, really light blue. So to the north is the higher elevations, the system drains to the south, where you get into those lighter colors. So I circled branch seven and looking at, um, you know, just the surface, surface or the terrain out there, we see that, you know, there's some different directions that water moves from north to south. There's the main trunk, but then there's the, I think the next slide here, as I jumped to, is gonna show it in closer detail. So again, these yellow areas, yellow arrows show flow directions of the main trunk there in the center of the screen flowing north to south, and then branch seven flows from east to west into the main trunk at that yellow star. So really that, that capture area for branch seven or drainage area is mostly from the north there. And the land that's south of branch seven, really that land is sloping to the south towards, is that a hundredth street? Okay, so the main trunk crosses a hundredth street there, towards the center bottom of the screen. The land to the east there, you know, follows it kinda parallel, but it's just sloping it, sloping to the south, where it eventually, so we just kinda shifted further south here. So here's the main trunk on the left side, crossing highway twenty-three, and that, uh, another land and ditch there alongside that north-south road. It's crossing highway twenty-three at a different location, but then it's coming into the CD fourteen system, just not, not at branch seven there, but further south. So I think we just wanted to, to address that, to, you know, really explain, you know, how that branch seven, not repairing it, you know, what lands will have this remaining efficiency impairment of the drainage system. So largely, it's a, it's a parcel there that belongs to Roland and Elaine Schaefer. Uh, that part is not actively being farmed, the majority of that area draining directly into branch seven. So, um, that was one area that we looked at following the comment from the hearing earlier this year. And then now I'm gonna transition to, uh, the main trunk culvert at a hundred and seventy-fifth avenue. So there was comments about, you know, what is the elevation, what's the depth of that culvert? Doesn't seem to be draining properly. So I just have a, a slide here, and that's a circled area there where we, we call out culvert. And after the construction was done, the culvert was lowered and the channel was excavated, we did a survey to verify that the channel was excavated down to the depths that, you know, we called out in the, in the plans. And same thing with the culverts, that they were put at that elevation that we required. And these red Xs that I have on this profile are what we surveyed after the project. That solid dark line is what our plan required. That was our design. So throughout that stretch, they're at our grade, they're at our depth. And in the center of the screen, where the yellow circle is, that's the culvert. So the culvert at a hundred and seventy-fifth avenue, it was lowered about a foot and a half. And the ditch was also excavated, you know, half a foot to a foot and a half to even more going upstream to the west. So, you know, I think the optics, if you look at that thing now, you know, it looks different. You might have, you might see, well, you know, I mentioned with the project there, uh, in later two thousand twenty-four, there was some more work done to clean out areas on CD fourteen that were originally skipped due to some wetland issues. So that work was done in late two thousand twenty-four. So that may have been temporarily impacting the water levels here at this crossing, you know, further, further altering the way it looked. So I know that, uh, Chris and county staff have been out there on site, you know, this spring a couple of times, and, you know, have, have seen it, I think, behaving normally, and, and it's been dry, at least a portion of this year, and.
Just to add to that, we, uh, went out there, saw today, there is some water in that ditch today, but, uh, a week ago, week ago on Tuesday, right? Uh, was, uh, it was observed that that ditch was dry. So, uh, any concerns of that not draining? Uh, I think we don't have those same concerns, because we have witnessed it within the last two weeks, is that to be dry? And now that we've got some rain, there is some water in there. The slope, I'll point out too, is relatively flat, but it does have fall, um, going to the south. And if, you know, in periods of dry time, if it was still holding water, maybe we'd have more concerns, but due to the moisture that we've had this spring, and we have observed it being dry at times, we just don't have those concerns of it not draining.
Okay. Okay, then the last item I have is on branch three. So there was a question or a comment from a landowner that, you know, they didn't, by review of the drawings, they did not feel that the excavation occurred to the right depth. So I, I think this has been, been addressed, um, outside of the meeting, but, you know, I just wanted to address that directly here. So the solid line is our design profile. That's what we required the ditch to be constructed to. There was a several hundred foot stretch here at the very lower end of branch three, where the existing channel bottom was actually lower than our design. So that happens, you know, for a couple, a couple of factors that go into that. You know, one is we're looking at the a hundred plus year old original, original design profile, and, and looking at all of our borings across the miles and miles of ditch and coming up with our, you know, our best reasonable approximation of what the design should be out there moving forward. It's not just connecting the dots always. And we see this happen if, you know, if there's been a landowner at some point in the past that has done some work independently of the drainage authority, you know, maybe twenty years ago, maybe eighty years ago, where they actually just deepened it, overexcavated it past that original design. So you get this, you know, anomaly, and that could be what's going on here. So there was limited excavation through this stretch. Uh, we just had the contractor kinda get that vegetation out of the bottom and just a minor amount of, of material to come out through this section. So that's just a clarification there on what branch three comment was.
Okay.
I mean, that's my last slide to address the.
One thing I was thinking of, Chris, and, and Nick, I think you asked me about this branch four. Um, can you address that, please?
Yeah, um, so this goes back to the purpose of the reestablishment of drainage records process. So this ditch was, uh, petitioned, uh, December eighth of nineteen fifteen. And the original petition, um, and original order for this ditch did identify branches one through seven. However, sometime between, um, July fourteenth of nineteen sixteen and the sale of ditching jobs, as they called it back then, now we would call it letting a contract, but they called it sale of ditching jobs. On August thirtieth of nineteen sixteen, branch four was removed from the actual work. The nineteen eighteen order for final hearing on report of engineer of final completion of ditch fourteen. So it's nice to see after a hundred years we haven't changed. It took two years later, um, the final order confirms the establishment of branches one, two, three, five, six, and seven, and their stationing. So originally identified in some of the original documents, when it was originally petitioned, originally ordered, did identify a branch four. However, the final order of the work completed in nineteen eighteen, uh, does not indicate that a branch four was actually excavated then.
Okay, thank you. Anything else from staff?
Uh, no, I was just, I, well, just to maybe make sure the order is happy when we come to type it up, uh, I think there's some things I should read here on the, cause I just had it now. Yeah, I was looking for it, so. Yeah, so just to recap once again, the cost. There it is, it fell out. Um, okay. Uh, the estimated cost of repair at the time it was ordered was nine hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars even. The actual total cost of the reconstruction repair was five hundred and twenty-eight thousand, four hundred and thirty-eight dollars. Additional outstanding costs for the repair proceedings, the redetermination of benefits and damages, the reestablishment of drainage records, payment of buffer strips, uh, comes to seven hundred and seventy thousand, one hundred and twenty-six dollars and forty-four cents. The total benefits provided by ditch fourteen are one million, one hundred nine thousand, eight hundred and seventy-eight dollars and two cents. So that would conclude, uh, staff reports unless there's additional questions.
All right, and before we open up the public comment time, uh, staff, or excuse me, members thinking the same on interest rate and payback period, I'm sure the CD fourteen landowners would like to know that.
Yep.
We kinda have some consensus on that.
Not gonna, not gonna.
Not gonna budget.
Straight from it now.
I just wanna make sure we're all in agreement. Okay, thank you. We'll open up the public comment. Monty, did you have something?
I wanted to mention, i- if you're with us by phone, you're with us by phone, in order to unmute yourself, you, you need to hit star six on your phone. Star six on your phone to unmute yourself. If you're with us by computer, you can do that just by clicking your mouse on the, 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 the little microphone icon. But if you're by phone, it's star six to unmute.
Thanks. All right, we'll open up the public comment on CD fourteen. Anyone that'd like to speak in regards to that, if you could please come to the podium and state your name and address? Anyone online or in the audience? Again, any public comment on CD fourteen?
Eric Jacobson, uh, ditch fourteen. Um, as now the, the ditch is complete, or, I don't, draining from the northern part of ours, um, it's definitely making improvements to land. And, um, I see the land being more of a value, especially joining in the ditch area. And that consists of, uh, what I hear, um, better hunting, everything else. Farmland is being developed. I'm, my thoughts is it's probably time to have the ditch red determination for landowners. What, what's your thoughts on that?
So are you, you're saying you think it's time for a new redetermination of benefits, so have the viewers out again to take a look at CD?
Correct.
And just so we're clear, you know that that's an assessment to the landowners?
Yep.
Okay.
And additional cost, yeah.
Additional cost, yeah. I just, I wanna make sure we're.
Yep, and, um, have, has anybody found out for sure of what it would cost per acre?
I don't know, but my first question to that is maybe Michelle can hand, can a landowner, uh, request a redetermination of benefits? Or is it twenty-six percent of the benefiting landowners? Do you know that? If you could look at that, um, and I'm sorry, what was your next?
The cost.
The cost?
Per acre.
When we did the, when we did the countywide redetermination of benefits for all the systems, it was four bucks.
Yeah, we got a good break.
Four bucks an acre, then?
Right.
I don't know.
Right.
With, unless we ask them specifically what the cost would be for CD fourteen.
And there too, if, if they would come out and do the reevaluation and, you know, et cetera, would they do a satellite image? Or would they drive through, would they walk through to actually see where the water is still sitting? And where the water is not, and the farm, the farmland is going on?
Good question. So let's hypothetically say that landowners could request that. That's something we would have to talk to them about in, when they put a proposal together.
Right.
You know, um, did you find an answer to that? So there's two options. The ditch authority could request it, right? Or twenty-six percent of the benefiting landowners for that ditch system could request it.
Dollar size wise, or?
Good question. Benefited acres, so twenty-six percent of the benefited acres.
Because what, what it, what it appears is, um, to the north of our property anyways, um, basically my whole time of being in the area, that's where I grew up. To the north of me, it was pretty much a, a flat metal swamp. You could not drive a four-wheeler, nothing through there. You could, you could hardly walk through there. Now it's four-wheeler bowl, um, it's, it's wide open. The ditch is this deep, there's water, but it's deep. It's, it, it's changed the value of that property, and that's where I, I feel the, um, the land that was assessed very minimal, they, they need to, we need, we need a full potential of the land after, after the ditch is done. And, and it's pretty much done, correct?
Yep.
All the plugs are removed?
For what we're gonna do.
Right.
I mean, we didn't do the full open channel repair because it would have been three point one million dollars potentially.
Right. And then, and then so forth. Um, the, so the larger our payment of landowners, it trickles down to the larger bill we have to pay on maintenance.
Maintenance will be handled the same way based off your benefit, yeah.
So it's just a big snowball effect, where if you got this big. So it's just a big snowball effect where if you got this big payment that you have to pay, you're gonna have a big
Assessment. Big ma-
Repair bill also.
Well, this is the repair. And so then if we move into a maintenance assessment on CD fourteen, and I think we've had that conversation.
Yep.
That's the hard part now because we've gone through this repair and assessing the landowners. I think the landowners would be very upset if we didn't maintain these ditches going forward, but that's gonna come at a cost.
Right.
And it's on those landowners.
Right.
I mean, that's just the truth. So, and again, we're gonna talk about maintenance assessments, but that's how it would work.
Right.
Going forward.
So, so we, we need twenty-seven percent?
Twenty-six percent of the benefited acres. Or twenty-six percent of the property owners or the ditch authority could require it.
Okay. What, what, what is your thoughts on it? I, I don't know.
Probably the first you heard.
I'm sure you guys are.
I'm gonna leave it up to the landowners.
I'm gonna leave it up to the landowners too. And I'm not gonna vote to put more on them.
Um, the, the county engineer and our ditch authority personnel, they have been out there, they've seen how well it's working. How well other landowners are take, you know, getting advantage of the drained area rather than standing water. Um, I just foresee there's gonna be more farmland turned in, you know, now that it's drained, let's use it. There, there's, there's farmers all over looking to get more land fertility.
And I, I think you heard a little bit of the consensus that ditch authority doesn't seem overly interested in, in calling for the redetermination and putting more assessments on the landowners. But if the twenty-six percent of the landowners request it, we, we gotta act.
We gotta act.
Right?
And that needs to be done before the final bill is directed to the people themselves right now, right?
I, I don't think we can mix that. Go ahead, Michelle. So this is already in progress. And if the landowners decide that they want to have a redetermination done again, that would affect the future repairs and/or maintenance.
How about payment of, as of right now?
Won't affect that.
Wouldn't affect that.
That's already done.
That's done. Well, it's not, we haven't acted on it, but.
Well, may, maybe we can change that before we decide on, uh, what our final bill is, if we can get a redetermination on the, the land and spread that out. So it's not such a big lump sum for just a, a small handful of people.
Is that even an option?
I believe that this was ordered, repair was ordered, cost was ordered. So while we're just working on the assessment piece, they're subject, so that assessment goal determines how that will be assessed. So that repair that's already been ordered. So it's in the past, we're just taking interest rate and.
Because we're basing it off of redetermination of benefits that happened at a snapshot in time, right? And he's talking about improvements, I don't want to use that word, things that have improved since then.
That would have to, a redetermination need to be done and that would only affect.
Going forward. Okay.
What do you do?
So I, yeah, I guess the option sounds like is if the landowners want to call for the redetermination, then we'd have to deal with it.
Yeah.
At a later date.
Has that ever happened, Joe?
No, not that I've seen. Well, I mean, this soon after a repair.
Okay.
It happens when my neighbors do come forward.
Do you generally see landowners bring that forward or do you see the ditch authority do it? Or both?
You know, I don't think I, I'm inside of those in workings often, but I think it's, I think it's a drainage authority, you're gonna order it. If you see an issue that they're outdated or there's, or some other reasons, you have to order it. But normally I think it's, they hear the discussion, the desire for a redetermination before they act. Landowners not necessarily seeing the formal petition.
Okay.
Just for information, the watershed has a total benefited acres of three thousand four hundred and sixty point eight. Uh, twenty-six percent of that would be eight hundred and ninety-nine point eight acres. So just kind of glancing through the list, it seems like most are just the husband and wife. So when it comes down to twenty-six percent, essentially you need owners that own at least eight hundred and ninety-nine acres to make a decision. What do you think of cost? When we had the redetermination of benefits started, we locked in a price at about four dollars per benefited acre back in twenty twenty-two. So if that's four fifty, five bucks an acre now, are we fifteen thousand dollars? Is it twenty thousand dollars just to have a redetermination of benefits?
Which will go back to the whole system.
That would have to be part of the, that would be assessed.
It wouldn't be the twenty-six percent that petitioned it? It would go back to the whole system.
And then when, when the board is considering it, those are things that I think the board should consider. That additional cost, are you gonna change the values of the land enough to?
Put the cost on the system?
Yeah.
All right, any other public comment? CD fourteen.
I just wonder why the swamp owners don't have to pay anything. I have, I have eighty acres. And I paid thirty-five thousand and the ditch does not do anything to my field. Goes through my pasture. A tip of about forty of the eighty. It did nothing to me that helped. That's more than I paid for that land when I bought it.
Were you able to have a discussion with the viewers at all and how they determined that? Did they reach out to you at all and have that discussion? No?
Well, if this, if I gotta pay that, I'm gonna plot my, my eighty off and build houses. I have to.
Within the government, the county will benefit from that also.
Well, I can't afford to pay that. I live on social security right now. I farm forty acres of that eighty, all the field is on it. I make enough to pay my taxes and insurance off that. So I live off of, uh, twelve hundred dollars a month, social security. How would you like to do that? When you own, own everything and then you gotta repay it. Rebuy the land is what you're making us do. Like the guys that signed for it, like Aldrich, he don't even pay for that whole, that whole forty he bought, little over a hundred dollars. Why? You know what he's gonna do with, that he's got this ditch? He's gonna eventually make it into farmland. And we're the ones that helped them out. They drained all their mud through our land. I guess that's common sense.
All right, anyone else on CD fourteen?
I don't know this.
I'm on the phone, can you hear?
Is that okay, Frank? Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, this is Elliot Apple, sixteen, seven, ninety-five, eighty-ninth street, Northeast. Uh, I am in section fifteen of Maywood Township and the portion that I'm on, I believe it is branch five. And you gotta forgive me, I can't remember. It dumps into another branch and then it dumps into fourteen. And branch five was not cleaned. And I'm, I'm fine with that. I'm happy you didn't clean it because I'm glad you didn't go with the three million dollar option. I'm glad you only went with the four hundred thousand dollar option. Um, but I'm still being assessed for the, uh, you know, for the, for the cleaning. And, and I'm still gonna be assessed for the maintenance. I, and I wish the assessment could be re, uh, you know what, I mean, I don't want, and I really don't want H two overviewers spending a ton more money either, you know, because I gotta pay that then too, but I, I wish it could be reassessed, uh, reflecting the portions that we did not clean to save wetland mitigation.
Um, Elliot, just while you're talking, staff's trying to look at branch five here. Did you find something? I'm gonna have the engineer address that for you. Thank you, Frank. In regards to branch five.
I think it, I, I think it's five. It's right south of Oak Park. Um, it starts in the, you know, basically the east side of Oak Park.
I think that would be branch two. Uh, branch five, we did, we did clean that out, but I think branch two, we did skip a portion of that.
But some of branch two was done.
It starts in mine and then it goes through Sharon Larson and it, and it goes kind of south and then east and west, or west, I guess.
Elliot, if I understand correctly, regardless of whether or not the branches were clean totally or partially, any of the benefiting landowners on that ditch system would be assessed.
That is how it works because I am being assessed, yeah.
So.
So, yeah, all right.
I got, you have another comment, Joe?
Yeah, just to clarify.
Okay.
There was a portion of branch two, the up, upper half of it, we did not repair due to those wetland impacts.
Okay.
So that's right.
That's part we omitted because of wetland mitigation we would have had to do.
Correct, yep.
Okay. Anything else, Elliot?
Uh, no, I don't think so. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Frank, thank you for waiting. Elliot, could I, if you are done, could I have you mute your phone, please?
Oh, yeah, sure. Do I just push the button, the mute button or I gotta star six again?
Let's try star six. That did it. That did it. Thank you. Okay, go ahead, Frank.
Um, my comment was I, I had a conversation with Eric last night and he commented about two landowners that passed lowland. And their repair cost for ditch fourteen was like a hundred bucks or seven, seven hundred?
It's just a few.
Yeah, a few hundred dollars.
The assessment?
Your assessment is only a few hundred dollars. Um, our repair cost for ditch fourteen is five thousand four hundred, no, five thousand, five hundred and forty-five dollars. Once again, our, our eighty acres is on the western edge of that watershed. I don't see any benefit from it.
Did, were you on the list for, to reach out to talk to H service?
The, the thirty day, the thirty day limit
Yep.
For rebuttal
Yep.
on the redetermination of benefits, which I did not understand or did not know, is, was gone two years ago.
Right.
So I, I can have it taken out of the watershed. I, I can have it taken out of the watershed for ditch fourteen. I can petition to do that, but I still have to pay it. But my comment is, these people that petitioned to have ditch fourteen cleaned out have the ditch on their property and they're only paying seven hundred dollars. We are way over on the western edge of it and, um, with, um, with the repair cost of over five thousand and outlet benefits to nine for ditch fourteen, we're assessed seven thousand dollars.
But I, I do believe, isn't, isn't the benefit established on the use of that property? What the actual use is, you know, everywhere from woods to cropland.
Yeah, probably, but now that their, their swampland is drained and they're turning it into agricultural land.
To Eric's point, that may bring up a redetermination of benefits at some point.
Yeah.
Be able to pick that up.
But I still don't think, I still don't think that the determination of benefits was quite right. If you have a ditch going through your property that the ditch authority is cleaning out, why wouldn't you be assessed more than seven hundred dollars? When we, we're not even close to the ditch and we're, our total assessment for ditch fourteen is, is seven thousand dollars without, with the outlet benefits. So I'm just saying, I don't think that is quite right.
Quite fair.
And we also have ditch twelve, but that's a whole nother issue that's coming up.
Thank you. Anyone else on CD fourteen?
Nick Schumacher again. That being said, so like when they did this determination, obviously they did this before they decided to abandon some of these branches, like Elliot's, correct?
The redetermination of benefits was done, was it one of the very first steps?
Yes. So I talked to that guy too, and I looked up supposedly the statutes and it says what the land is currently used for and what it might potentially be used for.
Okay.
So I asked him, I said, did you go back and your due, your due diligence and go back and look at the slides? They have slides, you could pull them up from nineteen thirties. So they had aerial photos of this stuff. That stuff that they said was now a swamp was actually field. It was tillable ground. You could see it plain as day in the photos. Some of that property was foreclosed property, some of it was state property that got neglected. They did not take that into consideration at all. So I see it as null and void because like Elliot, why is he paying when his ditch was abandoned? He was paying on his benefit as if that ditch was being cleaned.
Well, I, I think I just heard half of that branch was cleaned.
Half, but it didn't.
But because he's a benefiting landowner, he helps pay the whole system.
Exactly. But now we got these other benefiting landowners that are paying peanuts and like Elliot's, for instance, his ditch ain't get cleaned and he's paying way more than they are. And he's gaining way less than they are gaining.
But, yeah, they've changed the use of their land since the redetermination has been done.
Right. And I asked him about that and he said, well, they, basically he just kept going around and around and around. I said, did you do it what it could potentially be used for? Basically, they said, no. They did it what its current state was.
You know, off the top of your head, what statute says about that?
What about the potential land use? You, I think that viewing process is not a completely rigid method. There's some flexibility with how they make their conclusions.
And they just assign a type to it?
And it's like I said, I saw, I find it bizarre. I mean, anybody could want a computer and take you literally, you could check out these photos from back in the third, at the earliest I could find was like nineteen thirty, I believe it was. I, I could be off by a year or two. I don't remember exact, but you could see how everything has obviously changed over the years and why, because, it's because not necessarily the current landlord, it's not their fault. It's like I said, it's not your guys' fault either. It's the people before that didn't do their job. But now they're gaining that back. And not that it's bad. I, 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 I mean, they should be able to gain that back. Anybody that has property on this should be able to use it to full potential.
Sure.
I'm not saying that at all. I'm just saying, anybody up here would see this like Elliot's sprint, he's, he's not gonna gain nothing. The maintenance fee isn't helping him at all, but yet this guy that, the pop, people that have the ditch through their property are paying peanuts on the ditch maintenance.
Based off its use at the time of the redetermination.
Right.
That's the, I can't even keep kind of going back to that because it's a snapshot in time and when they did that. I mean, these landowners could change that the next day.
They could, yep.
And that's not.
And they have a part to it.
Exactly.
Yeah. But that should be up to the ditch authority too, on the same aspect to fly over and say, okay, look at, I think some people are, look at what we've got here and this is not quite right.
Well, and I think what you, you're finding though is a ditch authority who's skittish of putting more assessments on landowners to do another redetermination. And that's why there's an option for landowners, twenty-six percent of them
Right.
can get together and petition it and then we have to act on it. I just don't think there's a lot of appetite at the moment for the ditch authority to go after redeterminations and assessing you again.
How did that work to initially clean a ditch? So did it just take one landowner?
One land, one benefiting landowner of.
Why is that different now?
It's not. That's statute.
Well, he's talking about the redetermination.
Oh.
So, yeah, to answer your question, so, yeah, one landowner can petition, one oh three E point seven one five. But when we looked at the petitions repaired, we saw that the benefits was last done in nineteen eighteen or whatever, like it was. We were bound by cost not exceeding that and we would have, yeah. That's what triggered the redetermination the first time. So we had a, a valid repair petition.
Hundred and some years old.
Yeah, correct.
But any benefiting landowner on that ditch system can file a repair petition.
Exactly. So why does twenty-six percent have to?
Statute says that. Right? Processes are different for whatever it is you're doing to the ditch. Improvements has also got a percent.
So if you have five percent of the ditch paying for all of it, of course, who's gonna petition and how are you gonna get it? When their people are paying nothing? That's not right. How can you have one signature to get it cleaned and cost one guy one hundred thousand dollars and it costs you less than a thousand dollars?
Again, depending on what you're doing to the ditch, there's different requirements by statute. I'm, what I'm trying, we're not making this up.
Right.
You know, so we're trying to follow what statute says.
But you guys do this, so now what are the answers? How do we get this changed to make this right?
Well, I shared that with you before. We gotta get to St. Paul. And it's gonna take a lot of us.
And not just Benton County.
No. And again, if that's the case, if that's the case.
This board does go down there and fight for our county and fight for the people in our county and.
This board does go down there and fight for our county and fight for the people in our county on several different occasions. But five voices compared to a hundred voices is a big difference.
But again, then all these people on these boards, and if that's the case, people if they don't own property on a benefiting ditch, they have no say in this, correct? So why, when we go down to the state, you're having somebody that lives in town that is on this, or could be, I'm not sure, I don't know, I'm speaking our content, but why are they on that board?
What board?
Or like this drainage board, who come up, who made these rules?
The TEC, he's come.
I don't think he's talking about the TEC. Minnesota lawmakers over the years have made the statutes, I mean, I can't tell you who made them, I don't know who drew them up.
Right.
You know, our elected officials over the years have created the statutes.
Right. But these elected officials, do they actually have property and?
You know how it works, I mean, the metro could've came up with all this stuff, I don't know.
That's, that's what, that's what's gotta change.
And that's what's going on with a lot of the stuff at the state level.
Right.
That's where the change has to happen, we can't sit here and change the statute.
No. So I'm just like, I'm just curious, how do we get people to get, how do we do this, I mean, you guys are obviously on the board, so.
Landowners get fed up enough with it, with stuff, and they get together and they go down and lobby their legislators, that's how we change things. That's why we're a democratic republic.
Supposed to be.
Supposed to be. CD fourteen, anyone else on CD fourteen? Anyone else online, CD fourteen, anyone in the audience? Final call on CD fourteen. All right, public comments closed, what are your wishes, members?
Mr. Chair, just so we understand, we're gonna go stay with two percent interest up to fifteen years.
Right. And you've got, again, a couple options in front of you, very similar to the last ones?
Yep. I'm gonna read it all this time.
Okay.
Motion continue the hearing to allow staff to prepare findings, and an order consistent with the proceeding include all comments received through the public comment process, and the draft findings, and order be written to accept the contract and approve the assessments for two percent interest rate at a fifteen-year payout. And the board recesses the hearing to the board's regular meeting on July, June seventeenth.
At ten AM?
I'm sorry.
Ten AM?
At ten AM, thank you, at which the meeting, the board will consider their findings and the order to accept the contract.
All right, you've heard a motion, is there a second?
I'll stick on it.
Okay, any other discussion? Any other discussion? Hearing done, I'll, roll call, please, Beth.
Commissioner Benoit?
Aye.
Commissioner Heinon?
Aye.
Commissioner Pop?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Motion passes, all right, we're gonna move on to set a, a start time to the annual meeting to consider maintenance assessments. We'll have some of those discussions, but we do need to set the date and time, and we'll have some discussion about that. Go ahead, Chris.
Yeah, so at the first meeting of the year, when the board sets all of its meeting schedule, it did set an annual meeting for August nineteenth of twenty twenty-five at nine AM, and that was advertised where the board normally advertises such meetings. But I think there's a desire to set a different starting time than nine AM for the annual meeting to discuss maintenance assessments, and this would cover all the ditches.
I'm, I'm interested in hearing from the public, six o'clock meetings work better than nine, I assume, for the landowners that come in and, okay? So, we get some consensus, we need a motion on that, Monty, or are we good just to change it?
Um, it just becomes a special meeting, and, uh, we'll need to make sure we post it three days prior, uh, and it can't be amended since it's a special meeting, so.
Okay, so, but consensus from us now is good enough?
That's sufficient, yeah.
Okay, so August nineteenth, six o'clock here for the annual maintenance assessments, countywide ditches.
Presumably that will be, there will be other matters on that agenda, other ditch authority, there could be.
Could be, but we're gonna have to deal with all the ditches, all twelve, or eleven, no.
Yeah, just for discussion, um, normally, we don't, normally, well, how do we normally advertise special meetings?
We don't, they just, they just, they have to be posted on a bulletin board and sent out to anyone who's requested it, just like any other agenda, right?
Do we have to have it as a special meeting, can't we have it as ditch authority?
Yeah.
So, uh, the way the open mean law works is you, you establish your regular means for the year at the first, the first meeting of the year, and then that's all you've gotta do, you post it, you're good to go. If you ever change that, you, you diverge from what you posted, it becomes a special meeting. And then again, you've gotta post it three days prior, and you can't amend, you cannot amend the agenda, uh, when you convene the meeting, because it's a special meeting.
So we have it on our call calendar already for August nineteenth, the only thing we're changing is the timeframe.
But how are we gonna let?
If you change one thing about it, it becomes a special meeting.
Then how do we let the landowners on all the other ditches?
That's what I wanted to get clarification, would the board desire staff to post it in the paper, and then therefore, just, just because it's all about costs? The cost of publication would be spread out.
I mean, you can always go above and beyond the core requirements of a mean law, I mean, if you wanna put in, advertise in the paper, that's totally fine, of course.
Christine?
I did get estimates on postcard, it would be roughly sixty cents each, so about a thousand dollars to the entire ditch system.
So we would spread that out on all ditches?
Yeah.
Member, landowners, you got an opinion on that? If you were one of the other ditch landowners, what would you think? But it's gonna go against the system? Okay, I just, that's what I wanna hear. We have it, I believe we have it on our website. Okay.
Is the public willing to pay for additional staff people to man a Facebook page?
We don't typically post our agendas on Facebook, but we can in this instance, uh, we, of course, they're always on the website, but we don't typically put, uh, agendas on the Facebook page.
Okay, it's just a matter of posting it, though.
That's easy, right, yeah.
Okay, we can do that, we can do it on Facebook, and it's on our county website. And we're gonna do a, so don't do a mailing, is that what I'm hearing?
See what they say about a mailing and Facebook, but you're okay with a mailing and Facebook?
Well, I'm asking. And anybody else have an opinion on it? Send the postcard? Sure.
Yeah, that's true.
Okay, send the postcard. So it'll be August nineteenth at six PM.
So Mr. Chair, given the possible magnitude of, of this mailing, I'm very concerned that this room won't be big enough. So between now and then, we might wanna think about alternate location, this room won't be big enough.
Yeah, suggestion, high school?
We would have to find out if another location is available, yeah.
So we'll work on the location too, and that'll be posted and on the postcard, so you can be looking for that. Remember to take a look at where the location is, because we may change it, especially with eleven ditch systems coming in. Okay, um, Nick, so, maintenance assessments, that's what this purpose is now in August, is we're gonna look at every ditch system in the county. And I wanna give you an example, so you can kinda understand how this work, worked. Last year on CD six, which is up near Silver Corners, we estimated, because we had no historical data to show us what it would cost to maintain these systems, and we assessed that system fifteen thousand dollars, okay? Um, fast forward, we went out and got quotes to, uh, maintain that, the buffer strips and make sure everything was good, and I believe the quote came in at roughly seventy-six hundred dollars. So that was good, right, it came in at seventy-six hundred, we thought it was gonna be fifteen. So CD six today has a credit balance on it. So one of the things ditch authority's gonna have to look at in August is, when it comes to CD six, a couple different things. We've got a credit balance, so do we even assess anything, maybe, maybe not. If we decide to, it would be just to build up the funds in that account, right, which could be used for anything going forward on that ditch. So that's just an example of a ditch that, that's the only one, to my knowledge, we've done maintenance on. So nine and fourteen, and three, um, I think we're looking at thirteen and fifteen again, they'll be addressed for future maintenance, Frank?
Uh, ditch twelve, there was a maintenance fee for that last year, I think you had, in the minutes it said you were gonna assess five thousand dollars for that.
Okay.
For each landowner, I think.
Uh, no, it would've been, it would've been system-wide.
Yep.
It would've been, if it was five thousand, which I don't know.
No, it was two, twenty-five hundred. In the minutes you had, I think you initially said five thousand.
Okay.
And you, you put it down to twenty-five hundred per landowner.
We wouldn't have done it on a per landowner, it would've been to the system, to CD twelve.
Yeah, for anybody that benefits.
Yes, but, right, but we wouldn't have designated an amount specifically for each landowner, because it's based off of their benefit amount, just like the repair. Okay. It's in the, it's, when it's collected, it'll be in CD twelve's account, which we can use for maintenance and/or repairs. There is a valid repair petition on CD twelve.
So CD twelve must like, once we completed the redetermination of benefits, we had to pay out those buffer strip payments on all those ditches. So, those ditches, maintenance assessments reflect the cost of paying buffer strips on, except for a few ditches that were larger, and the, the board decided to split that over, you know, pay half, or, yeah, assess for half of the buffer strips one year and then do it.
But because previous ditch authority chose to do redetermination of benefits, system-wide, all systems had a cost on them, and there wasn't any assessments yet, does that make sense? So those ditches that haven't even been repaired, their benefits were redetermined, and that came at a cost against the system, and that's what some of these maintenance assessments now will help pay for.
And we're paying that right now, this year.
Yes. So, okay. But each ditch system will be looked at individually on this, in this August meeting. And more than likely, there will be maintenance assessments coming for nine and fourteen. Tim? It's assigned to that ditch fund, every ditch has got its own separate fund.
Thank you.
Nick?
So, there's some talk about vacating ditches.
Yep.
Can you vacate just branches and not the trunks, or how's that work?
Good question.
You can do a partial abandonment of property of the ditch.
Okay, is, is that the trunk or just branches?
You can, it, it's not specific, it's, you can abandon certain portions.
Sounds like it's either or, certain portions of the ditch system.
So we could abandon ours, but that being said, everybody else that wants to abandon one, bear in mind, everybody upstream, or wherever they're downstream, I should say, so. But we're like the last one on our branch, which our branch very heavily touched, so we should have abandoned from the get-go and won't have to pay nothing. But of course, they didn't see that, they saw, holy mackerel, look at this gold mine right here, he's gonna cover.
I'm not meaning to laugh, but it's.
But this is crazy, and like I said, we maintained it, I don't care about this, I'll maintain mine myself, obviously I did, because they're out of touch if we didn't.
But we do have to have a, there's a, that's another process, right?
How do we get to abandon?
To abandonment.
So he would have to petition.
You would have to petition the ditch authority to abandon CD fourteen.
Just the people on ditch fourteen, or on, on the branch of, of our branch, or on our?
Yeah, they're doing a partial abandonment.
So it just, our, the parcels on our, so we could basically abandon our branch, so we're done?
Well. It's not just, it's not as easy as just, oh, I wanna abandon it, yeah.
I wanna know if we can just figure it out.
Cause, once again, you gotta look at where the water drains, if an open channel exists and it stops being a public ditch and becomes a private ditch, but then that drains into a trunk line of a public ditch, that land may still be assessed for the costs on that trunk line. Just abandoning a branch doesn't remove property from the drainage system.
All right. Because it's still in the watershed of that drainage system.
Yeah.
We, we had an issue with potentially abandoning CD, uh, ten, but it outlets into eleven. Yep. So then what do you do, because CD ten dumps into eleven, right, so if you're gonna abandon eleven, what do you do with all the water from ten?
That's what I mean, you gotta be the.
There's a process.
So we're still looking at doing that, right?
Yeah.
I looked into the abandonment, and you can do it, but once the structure's made for a ditch assessment and your ditch has been cleaned, those assessment fees carry with you until it goes to a zero level.
Exactly, but yeah, for, for future.
For future, yeah. But again, any, every landowner has the right to petition an abandonment.
Exactly, so if it's fifteen years, you're gonna pay on that fifteen years, and then after that, yes, it would be.
We did just abandon CD four, there was a petition for CD four, and it got abandoned, the whole ditch, but it was only what, mile long?
Yeah.
Not even, yeah, not even.
Mark? Go ahead, Nick, that all, or did you have something else?
And, cause, so basically, I'm assuming once you receive a petition for abandonment, you must look ahead and say, well, obviously, say this guy here, and there's a bunch of people upstream, he can't just abandon it, it's a lot of people upstream.
Well, what I would imagine would happen is, if, let's just say you were gonna file a petition, you'd have to meet with the engineers and go through the process of what that means.
Right.
You know, you're not just gonna come to ditch authority and say, I wanna abandon a.
No, that's what I mean, like, say the guy at the bottom.
That's all gonna get, all gonna get taken into consideration.
And, that being said, isn't, now you say you guys are the ditch authority, correct?
Unfortunately.
What's your duty?
To manage the ditch systems.
Exactly, so now that this ditch is all cleaned, isn't it part of the management strategy to come out and you verify that?
Yes.
This is not quite right, let's flip the chair around then and have all pay the neighbors, and they ever pay mine, and see how much they jump up and down? I think, that being said, you guys have the duty to come out there and say, yes, these assessments matter, the maintenance fees are not quite right. As you can see, some landowners are paying peanuts, the next guys, they should get redetermined.
Okay, we're mixing terminology up here a little bit, though, because you've said maintenance fees.
The maintenance, cause obviously the, the other stuff's already done, so we can't change.
No, you're talking about the repair, though.
The repair, yeah, repair is done.
The repair's done, so now anything going forward will be a maintenance item.
So is it your duty to say, okay, I think we should redetermine this, because this is not quite right?
So we had that in front of us earlier.
Twenty-six percent.
The twenty-six percent of landowners could do that, or the ditch authority.
Correct.
Exactly, what's your duty?
But I have a feeling that there may be some of your neighbors who may not share that sentiment and, and would say the ditch authority is now gonna assess us for redetermination of benefits.
I'm not saying, I, cause maybe there's some that are, you know, whatever, maybe you gotta pay a little bit more, we gotta pay a little bit less.
I know, I know it's a shocker that the ditch authority's a little gun shy about assessing any more to this system than we have to. And that's why I don't think there's appetite today for ordering a redetermination of benefits on CD fourteen. That doesn't mean it won't potentially come in the future, or landowners would petition it.
Well, look at the elderly people in the room, like, and there's other people that aren't here, but obviously it's not costing as much, that's not right to these people. And what's the purpose of doing a ditch when it's holding water, you put a ditch in and then water's gone? You win, the ditch full of water, although it's a map, it's a. So there's, the wetlands are, the wetlands, we'll call it the swamps, they're clean, they're dry, and all that, that land is usable.
And a redetermination of benefits would have to decide that, yeah. The system will pay for the redetermination, everybody on there, not just you. Anything else on maintenance assessments, I think we're clear on that? We'll get the card out, we'll get it on Facebook, it's on the website. All right, members, anything else?
No, just, I'd like to thank them, they're all courteous and.
Yes, thank you.
Um, good comments, comments we haven't heard before, I think that was a good, you know, good thing to hear.
And we'll get this wrapped up on June seventeenth, hopefully.